Hi, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. Tonight's our budget hearing at the Board of Ed. Thanks for joining us. We do miss seeing everybody. Hope everybody is well. Sorry for a couple of minutes being late. We just had a couple of little glitches we were working out. So we have so much on our agenda. We have so much going on. I'm going to jump right to Dr. Johnson. And we're going to talk a little bit about the ballots that are being mailed out. There was some confusion from a different school district. So, Dr. Johnson, can you explain what's happening with our ballot? Please?
Absolutely not. I cannot. There is no way I can explain it, but I will try. First of all, I think most of the people in the public understand that this year, they're not going to be provided an opportunity to come to South Side High School to vote, that their governor made the decision to have the entire vote for a school district budget and for board members this year will in fact be done exclusively and entirely by mail. So what the school district did was we got all of our voters, a list of all the voters. We have since put a ballot into an envelope. The envelope is a large yellow envelope, a picture of Soon, which will soon appear on our website, so there's no missing it, we would hope. We actually put it in the mail today so that our residents of the school district should expect that they will begin to receive it probably tomorrow or the next day. And it includes, as you might imagine, an opportunity to vote for the school district budget. There are four candidates for two positions on the board. There is also a vote on the library budget and a single candidate for a single seat on the library board. So all of that is contained in a single envelope. So it's very different than what we've been accustomed to living with. It's been made more complicated because apparently there has been a problem with the Board of Elections and some of our neighbors. There have been a number of people who live on the periphery of our school district, that is with Baldwin and with Oceanside, who have in fact received envelopes because there was the thinking that they might have been part of and were listed in the Board of Elections voting list as being a resident of another school district. You're not. Even if you have received an envelope from Baldwin, even if you have received an envelope from Oceanside, please understand that it's been rectified from our point of view. You will be receiving very shortly an envelope from us that does not look like theirs. As I said to you just a few moments ago, it's a large yellow envelope. We're very, very sorry for this mix-up. I don't want to finger-point at anybody. Just understand that this is new for everybody. It's new for the Board of Elections. It's new for school districts. We have a third-party vendor that works with us and helping us in fact regularly review the list of residents in Rockville Center. So we're certainly hopeful that because of the diligence of our district clerk and the work that she does with this private vendor, that only people in the Rockville Center school district will in fact receive envelopes from the school district. Unfortunately, the Board of Elections and the relationship that they have with other locations produce lists that were redundant with our school district. And so there are some residents who received more than one envelope, and I think in some cases up to three envelopes. We hope that doesn't happen on any large scale, but we felt that it was very necessary for us to at least provide some degree of an explanation to this tonight. And please, participating in the election, they ought to be returned to the school district by 5:00 on June the 9th. So again, we can only apologize for the problems that exist. Just understand, it's no fault of yours. You didn't do anything wrong by registering incorrectly someplace, and you will be in fact getting very shortly the correct information from the Rockville Center Public Schools. So, at any rate, if there's any questions that the board may have, I'd be very happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. I mean, we have to feel compassionate towards these other districts. This is a huge undertaking, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank our district clerk, Jackie Wong, and many, many people that worked on our ballots. It's a huge labor of love, so much more work than we typically have to do, and she always puts in 100% of our election and budget vote time. So thank you to Jackie. And really, for the people that have these extra ballots, the correct thing to do with them is to throw out the ones that you do not belong holding. So wait for your Rockville Center ones to come in the next day or two, but please just unload the district ones that you do not have any rights to. They're going to have their work cut out for them, counting their votes and verifying their residence, so we don't want to add confusion. You should not be voting on other budget votes for other districts. It's the right thing to do to rid yourself of the extra ones that you do receive. That is really the proper thing to do. So that would be helping our neighbors, and I know Jackie appreciates that as a district clerk, that any help they can get right now is appreciated. So thanks for explaining it, and again, we're sorry that you received more than one. So it is our time to get into our budget hearing. We will be receiving live questions.
I have two questions on the ballot.
Sure, Ben. John, sorry.
All right. Jackie, what does a resident do who doesn't get that big yellow envelope? Is there any... Do they reach out to you, or is it a done deal? How does that work?
Yeah, of course. They could reach out to me. My email was provided on the postcard that they received, and plus, you know, they could always reach out to... They could even email the Board of Education, and I just could respond to those. What we've been doing, residents already know, and they give us a call directly in the office. We've been in the office, and we'll look up people in our system to see if they're registered voters, and we could verify. And at that point, if it's too late to mail the ballot, we could ask them to come pick it up, or, you know, we'll do whatever we can to make any corrections that we need to.
Okay.
We do want to mention, I do have a ballot drop-off box that I've set up in the administration building in case, you know, you're getting close to June 9th and you realize maybe it won't make it into the mail. Our administration building is open. The ballot drop-off box is right in the little vestibule. You don't have to come into the building at all. It's safe. It's secure. You just open it up, drop off your ballot, and keep going.
What a great idea. I have one other question that people have asked. The process of opening up and counting the ballots, there's concerns of privacy. How do you address that?
So we just today received guidance from our attorneys. I have not reviewed them with the board or with Dr. Johnson yet. I do know that, well, when you return the ballot, there's... It comes... You're getting a larger ballot, and inside there are two envelopes. One is an oath envelope that you have to sign, and the outside is the return postage-paid envelope. From what I understand, and again, I haven't read the attorney's advice completely, but I do understand that I could open up the outside one, but the oath envelope cannot be opened until 5:00 p.m. on June 9th, and that'll have to be done in the open way that we conduct our voting. And we have not spoken of the specifics of how the room is going to be set up, or... But it'll be... You know, we'll have election workers again, and we'll share the process as we, you know, go through that guidance and figure out what we're going to do.
So you're going to take the envelope with the name on it and put it to the side, and the ballot is in a separate spot? So there's no connection to the ballot and the name, is what people...
When we open them that day?
When you separate the envelope and...
I will separate the ballot from its envelope after 5:00 p.m. on June 9th.
Okay. All right. We still... Okay. So we'll... We still have to run the process. Maybe we can speak about it at our June 3 meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
By the way, there was a question. There's been some questions that have been raised about live streaming, the counting of the ballots. There are two things that the public should know about that as well. One, it will be livestreamed. That's a requirement. So we will have a single camera set up, and it will be in fact livestreamed for the public to watch. It is actually a public event and something that the public should be allowed to either attend. The other issue has to do with poll watchers. People who are running for the Board of Education can in fact ask that a poll watcher attend the opening of the ballots, and we will be making a provision in a small area within the gym for those people who choose to come here as a poll watcher to in fact engage in that activity. So, again, this is all new to us, but I just wanted to mention that so that in the event that people wonder whether or not they have an opportunity to see what's going on, they do, and they will.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Tara, one last thing. Sorry. Dr. Johnson, we have four candidates running for two positions on the board. There'll be a candidates forum. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, there will be a candidates forum on June the 1st. I believe the... Every year, we have a... If there is a contested election, we have a candidates forum that is sponsored by the PTA. They bring in outside people to conduct it. They are looking for questions in advance that they will then screen and provide to the four candidates who are running for two seats. And I believe it starts at 7:00, and it will also be livestreamed as well. So we are working with them right now to make sure, just as our board meetings are livestreamed, this event will also be livestreamed for the public to... They're not going to be able to really participate, but at least they'll be able to attend.
Just one clarification on what you said. The candidates do not receive questions in advance. The moderators...
No, no, the moderator.
...give them for the first time to the candidates at the forum.
And they are... The moderators are somebody... It's not a member of our PTA. They bring in either somebody from the League of Women Voters or somebody from an outside PTA in another school district who has no interest in the election and no real knowledge of what the issues may be, and those are the people who are in fact engaged in asking the questions of the four candidates.
Okay. And one last thing, just to be crystal clear, the people who received a ballot from Baldwin or a ballot for Oceanside, that has nothing to do with us. Is that correct, Dr. Johnson?
It has nothing... No, that is correct. It has absolutely nothing to do with us, and I think we should take the advice that Tara had suggested, just toss them in the garbage. Because if you do choose, for whatever the reason, to send them back into the school district, it's an invalid vote in that school district. And quite frankly, knowing what they're going to have to do, they're going to have to validate every vote. Since there was this problem, they're going to have to make sure that every vote that they count is in fact a valid vote, and therefore coming from an address that legitimately should be part of their school district. It's a shame. It's one of those things that nobody anticipated, but for whatever the reason, the list of voters did not match the list of registered voters within their school district. So they sent out more envelopes than they should have. I believe as many as 10,000 in one of the school districts.
Yes. Again, let's help our neighbors out and not send in anything that's invalidated. It's just more work for them. So we do feel for them, and we understand this is a very tough way to run the process, so we want to do it with integrity. Any other questions about ballots or votes or any timeframe with that?
I think that was it. Thank you.
So since it's our budget hearing, we do have a public work session tonight, which is not a regular meeting. So we would not be accepting questions that are based on some of the other topics of discussion, but for the budget, we will be accepting questions. We had a few come in today during the day that we've already captured and will either work into discussion or ask of everybody who is here tonight. But if there are questions that are raised from something that we're talking about you would like to write in, you can do that to the boe@rvcschools.org email address, and Mrs. Wong is going to read those to us after we go through some of the budget information. So you do have an opportunity to ask those questions tonight. So we are going to jump in and go to our close 2020-2021 budget. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much. You know, what generally I do is I turn this over to Mr. Bartels, but this is... It looked like a very ordinary year up until March. Since then, time, it's been seriously problematic. We are in, you just heard me describe, an unprecedented mail-in voting situation. So it's becoming exceedingly difficult for us to either understand what this means in terms of our budget, either passing or failing. We would hope that we continue to get the support that we've seen in recent years for our budget. But secondly of all, the issues of state aid have continually been talked about by the governor, and I think that in the course of what Mr. Bartels is going to be talking about tonight, it would be wise on our part to at least let the public know what that might mean in the event that state aid was in fact reduced. We quite frankly don't know if that in fact is going to happen. At this time, the governor has not said anything specifically to school districts. However, he has mentioned a number of times the number 20% without necessarily specifying what that exactly means. And so we are basing it entirely on conjecture, but nevertheless, we have felt that it would be wise on our part to at least incorporate that into the discussion that we had about our budget this evening. So on that note, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bartels. Robert, if you would like, please.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Yeah, so this is the formal budget hearing. We cannot make any changes to the budget at this time. It's really the culmination of a number of budget hearings and workshops that we've had that began back in January and then into the shutdown period. The budget increase, as it stands, is a 2.19% increase. Our tax levy cap this year is 2.03%, and our tax levy that we're proposing is 2.01%. So we are under the tax cap, but we need a simple majority to pass our budget this There are two different issues that we're really facing right now. One is a contingency budget if the budget were to fail, and the second has to do with, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, state aid cuts, mid-year cuts that we may see next year. They are completely separate issues. They don't tie together, and I'll try to explain that as I work my way through it. So I'll start with the contingent budget. If the budget fails, what happens is we would have to go to a contingency budget. There is question now over whether we will have an opportunity to have a second budget vote because of the timing and the short distance we have between now and the end of June, from June 9th to June 30th. Typically, we would be allowed to have a second vote to make any changes in the budget that the board deemed fit. But assuming the budget does fail, a contingent budget would mean that we could not increase the tax levy. That means we have to cut $2 million from the budget, about $1,970,000. Typically, what that would mean in the past is lots of discussions about staffing cuts, program cuts, how are we going to get there? We've received, you know, recent guidance that talks about capital projects not being allowed under a contingency budget. So our capital project line has increased in the last several years. As debt service has come off, we've added money into the transfer-to-capital line to continue to maintain our buildings and grounds throughout the district. They are expensive properties. As everybody maintains their own houses, we have to maintain the district. So there's quite a few projects that adds up to $1.8 million. So under a contingency budget, unless those projects are deemed emergencies, they would have to come out first. So that would mean $1.8 million right off the budget, right off that. After that, you're not allowed to add any new equipment. So if you have a piece of equipment that breaks, you can replace it, but you cannot add any new equipment that is not broken. So that would... We would reduce the budget by another $100,000 in that category. There is also no community use of facilities. So anytime you allow a group to come in to use the buildings, if there's any identifiable expense, so just turning on a light is an identifiable expense, you cannot allow that to happen without the group fully paying for those expenses prior to using the facility. So those expenses do get... On weekends, when a lot of groups do use the buildings for different activities. So Saturdays and Sundays, we have to bring in staff. On overtime, those are... Those become fairly expensive. So it's not something that we would look forward to, but it's something that would occur and something that we would be required to do under a contingency budget. Going back to those capital projects, those are all really important. So it sounds easy that we just knock that out, but there's a lot of important projects in there. So we have a couple of roofing repairs in there for next year. There's quite a bit of safety issues, gym wall padding in quite a few of the buildings we placed a little bit last year. We have a lot more around the district that we need to repair. There are bathroom upgrades. There are sidewalks and curb repairs that need to be made. So there's quite a few, you know, projects that throughout the district that really need to get done. That would be to real detriment if the budget went down and we're not able to do that. So that's really what would happen in a contingency budget. So because our transfer-to-capital line is so high, we're not into those staffing discussions and program cut discussions as we have been in the past. Now, that's an issue. The second issue we have is state aid cuts. So initially, our budget received an increase in state aid from the governor, but included a line item called a pandemic adjustment. That pandemic adjustment was a little bit over $400,000. It was $427,000. That was expected to be covered should the state get federal funding. So the initial discussions at the early stages of the shutdown were we could lose up to $427,000. As the shutdown continued and it started to look like we weren't going to open, that number, the governor had stated that they had concerns about future revenues, not being able to come into place to fund the remaining state aid for all districts. So he's mentioned a number of school districts could lose up to 20%. So if that were to happen for Rockville Center, we get about $13 million in state aid now. That would be $2.6 million that we could face losing in state aid next year. So that issue is again stepping apart from a contingency budget. If the budget passes, we have that problem, and if the budget fails, we have that problem. So no matter which way you go, you have that problem. Even if you passed the budget, you couldn't then take out those capital projects because of the way the tax cap worked. So if you were to try to take those capital projects out, you would have to reduce the tax levy for those capital projects because they're an exclusion. So it's not as simple as just saying, well, we're not going to do the capital projects, so we're going to save, you know, $1.8 out of the $2.6 million. So we have to go in a different direction. So we've had a lot of discussions about that centrally in administration, trying to figure out what we're going to do. So initially, what we did was we looked at what expenses can we hold off on. So we looked at an across-the-board cut of 20% on supplies. So we've had all administrators understand that we're going to have to hold off on at least 20% of each of your supply budgets that you may not get to expend if we do not get our state aid. Textbook upgrades may not happen until the middle of the year, which could impact some of the curriculum. Replacement equipment. So if we do have a past budget, we do have equipment items in there. We would not buy those until the second half of the year, until we were sure we would have enough funds for those purchases. Conferences and workshops, we would try to push off to the second half of the year. Some advertising that we do. If we don't have to put a name in The Times for new personnel, we have turnover in personnel we need to advertise. We would try to stick with some of the online resources and not place an ad in The Times. And some of the new in contingent staffing. So we have about $350,000 in staffing and contingencies in the budget. I think about $50,000 we're going to need definitely based on enrollments and how we have some of our populations, whether it's speech or special ed. So there's some pieces that we are going to have to add, but we have about $300,000 worth that we can hold off on to make sure that, again, state aid is there before we start adding any other additional staff for next year. So all those pieces add up to somewhere around $850,000. So that would cover pandemic adjustments and then a certain portion of up to the 20% that the governor had spoken about. In addition to that, again, as the shutdown has continued, we've been able to save on costs. So we've had large savings in transportation. You know, transportation basically shut down. We have not paid any of our contractors from that period of time. Had coaching, we have... We've saved money on coaching salaries. Project Great has not been operating, although there's an offset in revenue there. But again, it's a... There's an expense. Overtime, we had almost no overtime since the shutdown. The only people we have working extra is security around the buildings, but all that typical overtime that we would see on Saturdays and Sundays or possibly during the week is not happening. When the buildings are closed, they're closed. There is no additional overtime required. Chaperones, intramurals, again, programs that would normally be operating are not operating. A lot of the supplies, equipment, conferences, things that, you know, generally staff do, requirements, materials that are needed and are not purchased, gas and utilities. You know, we've had savings there. We're not running air conditioning in the building. So all those in combination, when we look at it, I'm coming up with about $1.8, $1.85 million in savings due to the shutdown that we're going to experience at this time of the year that we'll have to bring into next year. So combined, if you combine those two pieces, that's $2.7 million. So we're up over our $2.6 million in case the state does come back and we have that cut back of state aid. So that money, the $860,000 in holds and the other $1.85, the $1.85 would come from reserves. So that money would go into our reserves. That is... That money is really one-shot savings. So that's money we saved this year. We're not going to save that money next year. Those expenses, if we're back in session and we're in a school year next year, those expenses are going to be there next year. So it's really not something that we can cut from our budget, but it's something that we can put in our reserves and use for the future. Hopefully, we won't have that cut, that larger cut in state aid, and that'll just build our future reserves, which will help our budgeting process as we go forward. Any additional funds that we can put into our reserves will always help us in future years. We've used the reserves each year to help the budget, used it to offset retirement system increases, people at retirements that get separation payments. Those are all accounted for within our reserves. And I just wanted to mention one other piece. So in addition to those one-shot savings that we see, we have other areas in the budget that we had built in expecting to get some savings for each year. Each year, we talk about the $2.8 million. That's the amount that we return to the taxpayer. The $2.8 million is typically a combination of expenses that you don't spend and revenues that you receive above what you project that you're going to get. So that combination, in a typical year, we like to see about $2.8 million. If we come up with $3 million, we get to add $200,000 to our fund balance, to our If we come up with three million dollars, we get to add two hundred thousand to our fund balance, to our reserves. If we come up with two point six million dollars, that means we have to go into our reserves to to cover that difference and our reserve levels will go down. We have uh we were designated in fiscal stress two years ago. Last year, we were not in fiscal stress. We're not going to be in fiscal stress again this year. Uh really, the reason for that had to do with uh our borrowing, which had changed slightly due to the uh bonds that we had done recently. So we're in better shape there, but we were designated, there were a couple of categories where we were short on cash. We didn't have a fully funded uh unanticipated reserve or undesigned reserve. Typically, districts are allowed to carry up to four percent of their budgets in that area. Uh our school district, it was down in the two and a half percent range. So we had, we were not fully funded in that area and we did not have large reserves in in some of the other areas uh as other districts had. So um our total fund balance on the lower side of what the average school district would have. This year, it's going to be a good year for us anyway. So uh as far as saving money and putting money into reserves. So when I look at that two point eight million dollars, uh that number for us uh for this year is looking at like about six million three hundred thousand dollars. So that includes those one shots that I had spoken about, about the one point eight. And it also includes um other expenses that we hope we don't spend. We build into the budget, we hope we don't spend them, uh such as special education placements, uh things like that. We do have some contingencies for staffing that we hope we don't put in place. We tried to build in uh extra in transportation for extra transportation routes that may uh pop up. So we've had a a pretty good year. We had health insurance, which the the rate actually decreased slightly. That was good news. So we're going to save a lot of extra money in health insurance. Our teacher retirement system contributions uh were down. Uh so that was a a big help. Um that contributed to that to that uh reserve number. Um and are the retirements we had last year. We had a lot of breakage on our retirements. So uh a lot of those pieces, all added together, uh came up with this six million three hundred fifty. As I said, we take of that number, we take two point eight million, we return it to the taxpayer to apply towards next year, which we always plan on doing. Uh we have one million eight hundred and fifty that were really one-shot savings due to the shutdown. So that leaves us about one point seven million. So um we will be able to increase our reserves. Even with those cuts, uh possible cuts of state aid, we will still be increasing our reserves for next year by about one point seven million, which would get us up to that four, about four percent number in our undesigned fund balance. So it would put us in in good shape for next year and, you know, the the twenty one, twenty two budget planning process. So I I think we're in we're in good shape. Um we uh we did a lot of time preparing this uh between last year and this year. A lot of it is due to negotiations we've had with our different bargaining units who have been great since the tax cap went into effect. So this is part of a lot of the planning that we do. Uh so it's it's hopefully a good time for the district to um to shore up some of their reserves and continue to work on plans going forward. It's 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 again, a lot of it is one-shot monies. It helped us to keep the budget increase down this year, uh the different planning. That's that's really where we are.
Plus, Robert, we had to put some of our documentation on our website so people could review. We had started this process so much earlier in the year. Of course, we got a little um halted because of the COVID crisis. So there are a lot of resources on our website to explain. Um Dr. Pelletiere had done a presentation for us, Dr. Leahy, about their different areas and what the budget is affording the children, because that's what's so important, is that not only are we going to focus on what might be cut or what contingencies might be put in place, but that the budget was constructed to make sure that our children have a stable education. And we we've learned in the last couple of months that that's more important than ever going forward. So while we might not look know exactly what September looks like, we do know that the resources are needed for the children at this point in time. And that's really what our budget is affording everybody. So if we have to go to contingencies or make alternate plans as we go forward with state aid, I think we really want people to revisit some of those highlights of what this budget does afford the children, because it's, like I said, it's a more important time than ever. So thank you for sharing that. I I I want to ask you, this kind of information that you put out tonight with a lot of numbers that explains both the contingency and also what the state aid cuts are made up of, you know, proposed, what they're made up of. If we could kind of do what we've done in the past and put that resource on our website and have your voice kind of correspond to it so that if people um would like to follow along through that document, we've done that in the past, where we put voices to documents the next day on the website. Love to to have us do that for this.
Sure, absolutely. Um I I can match the document up to um basically what what I have spoken about. So uh people who may not have caught it the first time around, they'll have a document that they can use, that they can see the numbers. So um I I I think that that would be a maximal idea. Uh I I also wanted to mention, a- as you you were talking, I I realized part of part of this, and we add, if we get to add that one point seven million, planning for the following year, because if we have a cut of twenty percent in state aid for this year, we don't know how that's going to impact the state aid projections for the following year. So if if all there, if the state is in dire straits with revenues, this could be, this could impact us for multiple years. So that's another reason it's really important that we have that money in the reserves.
Good. Go ahead, Dr. Jay.
Yeah, two things I wanted to mention. I want to reiterate what Robert just said. Uh one of the reasons for monies in the reserves is that you have to take a look at this beyond a single fiscal year. You have to go out beyond next year and work your way into the long year as well. That's absolutely critical in planning for uh an anticipated and continuing problem with our economy. You can't presume that it's going to get better automatically and and suddenly respond and there will be state aid, we'll start flowing again. We know that from the recession back in two thousand eight. I lived with it again back in nineteen ninety one and and ninety two. Uh so it's a much slower graduation of monies that are returned to the school district. So the reserves and the management of those reserves are absolutely critical to the future of the school district. The second I wanted to mention, by the way, uh you know, Robert mentioned a fact about a second vote. I think what we need to do is to focus on that for just a moment and understand that one of the things that the governor did not say in his order, when he put out the directive that we have a a mail-in vote this year and that it'd be scheduled for June the ninth, there was absolutely no mention of a second vote. When you begin to take a look at the logistics involved in getting out a second vote, I know that Jackie and I have talked about this a number of times. There is actually no way that following a vote on June ninth, we would ever be able, in the month of June, be able to do another mail-in vote. It's it's logistically impossible to do. So we can't, we can't think and we can't ask our voters to think, that's all right, don't worry about it. Just vote no on this one, we'll get another chance. We're not at all certain that that's going to happen. Uh the governor has given no indication whatsoever. We don't know why he didn't at the time that he he gave us June ninth, that he didn't pick a second date on which a follow-up vote was possible. He could have done that, but chose not to. So all we know is that we have one vote this year, we have one bite at the apple. And I think what we really need to do is to understand as a community that this budget needs to be passed. Not, we we can't assume that there's going to be a second opportunity to have the budget passed. There may, for the very first time, not be that opportunity provided to school districts. And we may end up having to adopt the budget that it voted on the very first time. And it'll be the first time in the thirty four years that I've been here where we didn't have that second opportunity. But nevertheless, just understand, there is nothing so far in writing that would suggest that there's going to be a second vote possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're okay.
We had gotten a bunch of questions written in that I wanted to kind of um help address and I'm following along. One of them had come in, Robert, um just in regards to Baumann Bus Company, having gone bankrupt. You know, at a past meeting you had talked about if we would have to go back to rebid. Um that came to us again, so I did want to revisit that because um transportation is a a big portion of the budget. We do want people to understand what rebidding looks like. Uh could you go back uh and explain that? I know you had done that before. And tell us what the impact would be on the proposed budget.
Sure. Um the fact that uh Baumann has has now gone out of business, uh they are trying to reassign their contract. Uh we were hopeful that they might reassign fairly quickly and which would mean that another bus company could take over the contract as it currently exists. Uh and we would have the same busts. Uh we have not heard of an assignee at this point. Um so we're now good ways down the road. Uh we have been working on a new request for proposals, uh which we're hoping to get out either this week or the beginning of next week. Uh and that would then open it up to any, you know, any new bidders who would want to uh provide us with the transportation. So that uh could be good news or bad news for next year's budget. It really is uh an unknown. Uh we're a good district uh transportation company because we're very small as far as, you know, the total uh distance around the district, um which could lead to a way better pricing. Uh but we have had experience in the past where we've run out for an RFA and we've had a large increase in our in our costs. So um it's really an unknown how it uh would impact the way uh the way the budget sits. Uh we have a projected four percent increase in our transportation. Um that's really overall, uh not just our main contract, transportation carriers, but other contracts. So um that's what we have in the budget. But again, it's it's uh it's really an unknown about what the impact is going to be.
By the way, Robert, that four percent covers any new additional routes that we may in fact be absorbing as a result of kids who are placed else outside of the school district or elsewhere. So it's not like we're looking at giving everybody a four percent increase. That's not what this is about.
Right.
Yeah.
Robert, another question came in, and I think we just need to clarify it because I actually think that there might be um an error in it. But there was a question about landscaping and ground upkeep uh being at um a certain amount of money. I think that it was listed at five point five million and asked why it went up two million dollars. I don't believe that that is the case, but I think we should answer it.
Yeah.
Do information out to people?
Uh I I I saw that that question. Uh I'm not a hundred percent sure of exactly where it came from. The best I can tell with the numbers closest is they're looking at our uh operation of plant budget line, um which is right around five, five and a half million dollars. Uh and the increase is two hundred thousand, not two million. Uh so I'm not sure where uh they're getting the words grounds and landscaping for that. But um that increase is is due to um just general, general repairs, uh staffing, custodial uh salary increases, um uh equipment requests, uh supply requests for uh for the different buildings, for the custo-, you know, typical custodial supplies that would be needed.
And also, could you just go back one step and just clarify, when you talked about the two point eight million dollars that goes back to taxpayers, can you just clarify what that means to the community?
Okay, each year when we put our budget together, uh we have our expenses, our budget that we vote on, and we have our revenues uh that we need to support the budget. Um the revenues typically are your tax levy, uh your state aid, uh local revenues, which would be like non-resident tuitions, interest income, things like that, and any monies you're returning to the taxpayer. So it kind of goes on the other side of the ledger. So when we add all that in there, we always try to have uh two point eight million dollars that we try to take from one budget year to be able to carry it to the next budget year. It kind of goes into the reserves, but it's an applied reserve. It's a direct applied reserve. So that's why we always, we're always trying to manage that number with between revenues, expenses. So we always pick up an additional two point eight million dollars. And it's something that, you know, it it's it's a budgeting tool to use because you really need to have uh some contingencies in different parts of the budget, whether you need to uh add a one-to-one teacher aid, whether you need to place a student in a different school, whether you need to find a new bus route, uh as Dr. Johnson just mentioned. Uh so there's there's a number of contingencies. You hope you don't use them all. Some years you 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 will use some, you won't use others. Um but we we try to, you know, pick up that two point eight million dollars every year and return it to the taxpayer. And 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 we typically do do that. As I as I said earlier, sometimes we're a little above that. We can increase our reserves by a little bit. Sometimes we're a little below that. We may have to take from the reserves. But that's that's kind of the ballpark number that we're aiming at every year during the budget.
Okay, thank you. Couple of other questions that came in. They were about costs offset by certain things. So um when you were talking about savings from the shutdown, where does electricity and water and gas factor into those savings from buildings that were shut down?
Yeah, that's that was part of, you know, our projections for what our on-time savings would be. Again, you know, those are savings for this year um that we have, but next year, if schools are operational, we're not going to have those those savings. So it's it's not something you can uh apply to the next year's budget. You know, each each budget year stands alone. You have your revenues, you have your expenses. The end of the year, if you have extra money, goes into reserves. If you run short of money, comes out of the reserves. So it's just a a budgeting tool. So this year, we're going to be putting the money into the reserves.
Okay. And then just jumping off of that, I know we're going to talk a little bit later in the agenda about summer school and camp, but there were revenue that we expected from those programs. And whatever changes we put into play now, how does that impact the budget?
Well, w- we have typically with our summer program, we have our expenses, which are then offset by revenue uh that that come in. Um uh I know Dr. Leahy's going to talk about that a little bit later, uh what's going to happen for next year. We do have uh monies in the budget for those programs. So um as we look at it, um we, if we have programs, whether they're online or in person, the, you know, we'll be doing them online. The summer, we still need staffing. We still need to pay the staff for those programs. So those expenses are there, whether it's in person or online, uh will be utilized. As far as the revenues go, it depends on what kinds of programs uh we are offering, what we're going to charge for those programs. Uh but we do receive um BOSI's aid on our expenses. So we run our summer program through BOSI's. We pay BOSI's, BOSI's pays uh the staff in the summer school program. We then get aid on that the following year. So that revenue, we will always get back on any of those expenses. So it's really just looking at uh what we would charge um people who who come into those programs or any enrichment programs that we offer.
And and really, I think this is going to be a question for Dr. Pelletiere. This is about uh technology for next year. We had a question, um are there plans to move away from iPads and when? We had another question from another resident asking about um if we were moving over to Chromebooks. I know we do have a portion of technology on our uh agenda tonight to approve later on. But Chris, if you wouldn't mind just talking a little bit about plans for the future in technology, that would be really helpful.
That's something that certainly we need to finalize. We are uh we do have a project that tonight that we're going to talk about, a part of a project tonight. We're going to talk about some purchases that we need to make in technology in the immediacy. And we are looking at, again, purchasing Chromebooks instead of iPads. That is still being formulated and discussed, uh that it's something that we're looking to do, particularly at the at the high school level uh for this next year, if in fact we can get Chromebooks in. They they are coming from uh from China technically. Uh that's where they're imported from. It's where they're being built. So there are concerns around that. Uh we need to, but again, that's where iPads come from as well. So there'll be concerns either way. We're all looking at iPad, Chromebooks at the high school. That's a discussion that is ongoing.
Thank you. Um I'll open it up to board members for questions and we'll, Jackie and I will kind of look through and make sure that we're covering all the ones that came into us. So I'll open it up to board members right now for questions.
Robert, you touched on this a little bit earlier, but the retirement accounts for the, the reserve, money and reserves that we use for retirements.
Yes.
That's done on a five-year average, right? Is that right?
The
The TRS accounts?
Yeah, the, well, the TRS payments that we have typically are based on a five-year average. So we expect, if Mark continues to stay down, that this is going to be a bad year, which could lead to higher payment rates in the future. So any, any down year is going to impact you for five years. So again, that's, that's something that we would want to put in, in a reserve. So we have reserve for the employees' retirement system. We'd like to add one for the teachers' retirement system, which has just been opened up recently to allow the districts to accrue money in their reserve. That's actually the larger payment that we have to make as a whole district. So we're happy that the government finally allowed us to open up that reserve. But that's, that's important, a reserve to have to kind of stabilize that payment, which is what we've done with the employees' retirement system. We've had basically the same line in there each year. And any increase, we've been able to offset with, with those reserves.
So it's, it's pretty, I just wanted to point out, it's important now to plan five years down the, three to five years down the line because we can anticipate that that's going to be negative.
Absolutely, yeah. That's, it's why it's important to have reserves in those different categories.
Thank you. And then, and also, we don't know, we can also probably anticipate that we're going, when we do return to school, have to be spending money because I'm assuming there's going to be mandates that we are given that are going to be unfunded. Is that a fair assumption?
I would think that would be an extremely fair assumption. We typically get a number of those each year that we need to deal with. Sometimes they're not very expensive to deal with, other times they are. So for next year, depending on what limitations are put in place for us to open the year, we, we could have to expend a considerable amount of money on, on different, different issues that we may have to address to reopen schools.
Yeah, I just think it's important to highlight that even though there's so much unknown, we have to plan for the worst, right?
Yes.
I think it's important just to point that out to the community.
Thank you.
I agree. I mean, I think the unknown is scary for people, but we want to make sure that when our children do return to school, that they return to a school that we recognize and that they're getting the resources that we have really pledged to provide to them. So this is not a great time for us to be considering taking things away from them when we don't know what the future looks like. So I think that's an important point. We did have a question and I think, again, it might just be a clarifying thing that we need to do. But somebody was concerned about a middle school team being cut or anything to do with athletics being cut. There had been no conversation about that happening at any level as far as I could, you know, remember. So I just wanted to clear that up as well.
No, the answer to that is no. We have not had any, any discussions about the elimination of any teams at either the varsity, JV, or middle school level.
Thank you. I think it's important to clarify that.
Right.
Any other questions from board members?
I just also wanted to make a comment or a question to Robert. It, it almost seems like it's an easy answer to just sort of push aside the capital reserves and not make our repairs. But that becomes quite a problematic answer. If we don't make those repairs,
Right.
we've built this up over the past few years and I was here when there was nothing there. If we don't make those repairs, we incur serious damage. Can you just talk about that so that people understand what we're doing, that it's?
Yeah, we've, we've had a number of issues that, that we need to deal with that in the past, we've kind of done bond issues. So we kind of wait five to seven years, we do a new bonds and we try to make repairs. But in the meantime, other things are happening that are being damaged. So for example, you have a leak in a roof, which you can't get fixed. You patch it and then it leaks someplace else and you patch that, it leaks someplace else. But in the meantime, those leaks are now falling down onto the floor, be it in a gym or a classroom. And then you have floors that begin to buckle. So it turns into a secondary issue. So while you're trying to patch your, you know, problems, you take care of it, you know, and at one point, it turns into another problem. Same thing with, you know, you have cracks in sidewalks that continue to get bigger and bigger and bigger. If you, if you don't fix them, they continue to get bigger and more dangerous year after year. So you want to try to stay on top of a lot of those projects and there's almost always going to be cracks in sidewalks and so forth. So you want to make sure you try to stay on top of that and then fix those as, as best you can. And trying to maintain seven buildings like that and keeping everything in good shape does require a lot of money assigned to capital each year for, we have, get a lot of those small projects done. Sometimes we can get some bigger projects done as we're doing with the middle school and some of the issues we have there. But that's, again, is, is due to years of not just doing patches and patches and patches. So that's why it's really important to maintain that transfer to capital line so you can continue to maintain that, the maintenance program in your buildings.
And, and again, just to be clear, we wouldn't have an opportunity to prioritize that less than take half of the projects that we needed to do. So it would be an all or nothing. That $1.8 million would be gone. So the very important projects that fall next to maybe the other ones that are nice upgrades that we would like to do for the buildings, it would all go. I think that's important to, to note that we would not be able to prioritize those projects anymore.
Right, unless you had an immediate project that you were to deem an emergency. It's really, which I don't think we really can in any of those projects, but each one of them, there's an issue. Gym wall padding. We have, you know, around the district, the wall padding is falling apart. It's creating a dangerous situation. Is it an emergency? I don't know if it's an emergency, but you want to make sure that that wall padding is in the best condition and covering everything and making sure that that's, you know, that's appropriate in all of your building spaces. So, you know, just different things like that around the district. You want to make sure that, that's, that's all being taken care of.
Other questions from board members?
Yeah.
I'm good.
No, thank you.
Jackie, did we cover, I know we had gotten a couple in right before the meeting. So I'm just trying to go through and make sure we're covering everything. Anything that you are seeing coming in that I'm missing? Jackie, you looking at that? I don't know if she can hear me.
Maybe frozen.
She was frozen. She's ignoring me. It's okay. We're going to do our best to go through them. If we miss anything, we'll take a peek. Once Jackie unfreezes herself, we will take a look at that. And she's going to have to probably just jump right back into the meeting. But we'll do our best to get back to our residents, even if it's not tonight, in the next day or two. But we're going to give her an opportunity. We do have other subjects to go through. So we will come back to anything that we might have missed later in the meeting about the budget. So if there's no more questions from board members, oh, here comes Jackie. Let's give her one more chance, see if she can do that. I know we always have technical glitches. Hopefully we're back together again soon. We do miss being in person and being able to see everybody's faces. So just bear with us an extra minute. Jackie, if you can hear me, if there's anything you'd like to add for budget question?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I kind of got kicked out, but there was a question about the transfer to special aid. If you could report, explain that.
Okay, there are a few transfers that we have to special aid funds. The biggest is to our capital fund for debt service. And that's, that's not the projects that I was talking about before. That's projects that we've already completed, for example, the high school addition. So that's debt service on those projects. So that's, there's transfers there. Some of them go towards summer, summer school costs for special education students. We, in a number of cases, are required to pay 20% of the costs for transportation and summer expenses for some special ed students who are 12-month students. The state picks up 80%, we're responsible for 20% of it. We also have transfers for the school lunch program, although we have not used that in the last two years. That's been running self-sustaining for the last couple of years. So those are really what those transfers are for, but the, the largest one is to print the service.
Okay. There was one more question. It was a general question, just stating with such uncertainty, uncertainty for the upcoming school year, why would Rappel Center have any increase in the budget?
It's, it's just a matter of moving forward every year. There are expenses that continue to increase. So unless we were cutting staff and programs, many of our expenses are going to continue to increase. So we have contractual arrangements with all of our bargaining units. So those expenses that are built in, there are built-in increases for those. We have health insurance costs, which typically go up every year. They didn't this year. However, COVID-19 and all the expenses that are having in the medical industry right now, those numbers most certainly could go up next year. Transportation costs go up, just general costs, you know, across the board typically will go up every year. As Kelly mentioned, teacher retirement system costs, most likely that, that contribution rate is going to go up. So as we build budgets from one year to the next, again, it kind of goes back to where I said, you can't really take the one-shot savings that we have this year and apply it to next year and just drop next year's budget. It doesn't really work that way. If we were to see something like that happen over a few years, hopefully we'll be able to cut back more because we'd have more money in reserves. But we really need to keep that entire budget intact as we move forward.
Okay, I have one last thing, I believe. There's discussion that school will not come back into session in September. If that is the case, what would, how would that affect the budget?
Pretty much the same way it has, has now. If, if we do not have students in school, we would find savings and monies that we would have unexpended at the end of next year, which would then go into reserves. We would look at applying more. That's what I said, if, if it happens over a few years where we continue to have this, we would look to develop some sort of a debt reduction or a tax reduction reserve to try to start applying those funds so that we could just keep a lower tax levy. But that would, that would require, you know, again, another reserve, more monies and something that would involve a long-term plan. It's not something that we can kind of work, you know, one year into the next. It would be a long-term plan based on what our reserve levels are. So as, as I said, our reserve levels comparative to other districts have been relatively low. If that changes and we have much higher reserve levels, we can then look into plans towards applying that on a consistent basis to cover a, you know, a long-term or a slow impact to, to get that money back to the taxpayers and keep the impacts lower.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Robert. And I just think it's important, we're going to, like I said, Robert and I will get that document on the website tomorrow or the next day as soon as possible. The most important thing is that we are having the ballot mailed out now. So if there is a question that you have, please reach out to us. We would rather you base, you know, your information on facts and, and not some mistake that you might have found somewhere or something you heard. We'd rather have the opportunity to answer you and give you good information. Budget votes are very important to every district, obviously. So especially now at this time, we really want you to have the right information in front of you so that you could return your ballot, hopefully by June 9th at 5 o'clock. So thank you so much for all the questions that you wrote in to us. If we didn't cover anything, we'll go take a second loop around and make sure we respond to your email. And thank you, Robert, for all your work on everything that you've done for us and all the answers. We put you on the spot tonight. Now go take some water, take a break for a minute. Now we're going to move on to another one of our favorite people. Mr. John Murphy is joining us tonight. Thank you so much, our principal of the high school. So we're going to get an update, Dr. Johnson, on graduation and moving up ceremony.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me start and then I'll turn it over to John. We have six moving up ceremonies. We have five at the elementary buildings from fifth to sixth. And then we have the eighth grade moving up to, from eighth to ninth. Moving up ceremony, or ceremonies rather, are all going to be reversed, what we call reverse parades. They're going to be providing families an opportunity to come to the building on the day selected by each of the principals. For example, I know that the 16th is the date that the middle school is selected to have their staff available. And parents and students come and visit with them. Each of the elementary buildings are doing it on different days and each of the principals will be in fact notifying their respective fifth grade families and parents of the opportunity and exactly what would be involved in, in the parade, how it would work, where they were coming from, where they would be going to. So we're excited about it. It's really a great opportunity during this, this crazy, crazy time to celebrate a very, very important part of family life in our community. Moving up doesn't seem that important, but it's a very, very difficult thing for many of the children to leave their elementary school where they've been for six years or leave the middle school where they've been for the next three and move on up. We like to try to celebrate that with the families and with our students. And it's unfortunate that during these times, it's difficult to do that, but we are finding as best we can the way to allow our families to reconnect with their teachers, our teachers with the children and the families in a way that is, marks the days that they have spent with us with some kind of celebratory spirit. So we look forward to them and we also now look forward to marking the end of 13 years. At the end of graduation, at the end of the 12th year rather, we have graduation. So we're very fortunate to have Mr. Murphy, the high school principal, join us tonight to talk about where we are in the planning stages. And we're not there yet, but we're close. So John, if you wouldn't mind?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So this has been an ongoing process. With regard to the seniors, we'll confine our discussion to the culminating experience, which is graduation day itself. Albeit there will be other events, for instance, on June 5th, when the students are collecting their yearbooks and enter, and empty their lockers. There'll be more of a celebratory feel about the, the building and their entrance and exit into the, into the high school. The, the graduation ceremony itself was ongoing and evolving and complex. And the three different things that we wanted, not necessarily in order of importance, is to maintain the health and safety of the students irrespective of the outcome, to make sure that the community was involved in the celebratory process and make sure that students gathered a sense of closure and finality so that they could all be in one place at times. The one thing, the one common denominator that we heard from students and from stakeholders alike was that the one thing that the students wanted as a prerequisite was to be in one place in a commencement-type activity at once. In other words, a, a split graduation event where half of the students were at one time and half of the other was less appealing. So we've been working on this for five to six weeks and there's three parts of the graduation ceremony process, one of which is the commencement exercise itself, where students in one location, in one place, have a commencement-like, a graduation ceremony. The second one was a community event, which we are working on, which would be a parade, basically culminating at the high school, which would be a route similar to that which we're used to at homecoming, where the community would, in a car parade, would have the opportunity to celebrate and applaud the students who have had so much taken from them, especially in the second semester, and to realize the love and appreciation that we have for them and to know that their, their losses were not wasted, that we still do love and appreciate them and this is going to be a graduation that we're never going to forget. that we still do love and appreciate them, and this is going to be a graduation that we're never going to forget. And the third is one for posterity so that the greater community could also participate, even if they couldn't, in the commencement exercise and in the parade, which would be a TV show slash video tribute, which is still in the works. In terms of a shameless plug, special thanks to our TV production studio, Ms. Kate Schumacher, who's been working on compiling that as well as our yearbook advisor. So the three different prongs are still in place and I, as I've communicated to the parents and to the students, it has been my conscious effort. Hell bent on making sure that these activities occur before the end of June. The reason for that is so that, number one, we have closure to the year and that the students have close to a graduation ceremony in close proximity to the end of the year. Number two, in the later in the summer that it goes, and I know that there are districts who are moving towards July graduate or August graduation, we're going to start to lose students. And it starts to become anticlimactic, not just those students who are going to service academies, but those students who have other plans or in other words, the allure of the activity as we move into July and August starts to lose its appeal. So that was been my primary focus. The second two components of this, the parade and the video tribute were contingent on the first. In other words, I would, if I have my brothers, I would like to have them all within the one day and make a huge graduation celebration day for these seniors. As we've been moving towards finding a large venue for this and what we are now looking towards is we need to maintain social distancing and when the protocols are followed, it's not just enough to have the students distant at the quote unquote event itself. Districts and agencies have to ensure social distancing, both getting to the event during the event and after the event. So large gatherings and things like a football field don't meet the criteria that we've been given in terms of maintaining health and safety and wellness, as well as seniors who I appreciate their candor and honesty would tell you that in a football field celebrated with three hundred of their classmates who they haven't seen in months, that as much as they would tell you that they that they will keep their distance, it's it's going to be hard under those circumstances. So what we've contracted in our negotiations now are with a a site and a venue with an outside contractor who's had experience doing a drive in movie theater type commencement exercises where in a in a venue where all the seniors are congregated with large LED screens and a grandstand, students can participate in a commencement activity where they're congratulated. We would limit the speeches so as to limit the length of time for the activity itself and spend more time dedicated to the students themselves, acknowledging their names and their presence and giving out the velises we normally would at a graduation ceremony. The arc of this, and this is why in my communications to the parents on Friday, I took no pleasure or comfort in delaying the the concrete specificity of our plans. But the venue in and of itself has proven to be an exercise in patience and persistence. So that as we're going through these, we've gone through about a half a dozen where we engage in the venue. They give us our tacit approval. They pass it up to their hierarchy. And in cases up until this week, it doesn't meet their internal standards for with their, the comparison is their COVID response team in terms of whether they are allowed or even forbidden to have any conferences or large gatherings, whether we can maintain social distancing, whether or not they, it's in a drive in type spectacle. The last twenty four hours have been more positive. I received my last no on Monday, but I've received two commitments, one fairly substantive within the last hour and a half, that agreement in principle to hold an event within proximity to the high school at a location that will accommodate graduating class size and still give the kids the commencement type feel. I am more than confident that I think we're going to bring closure to this by the end of the week. Again, it has to pass through the channels of both the venue, the Board of Education, Dr. Johnson. There are other logistical concerns, ensuring the safety of the students, making sure that that the the venue and the site is agreeable, making sure that our attorneys are involved, that we are identified and that everyone is safe and secure. But having gone through this process so far with five or six different venues, I'm I'm more confident than I've been so far that one of the two venues on the table now is going to come to fruition.
Thank you, John. I know you mentioned, you talked a little bit about July and August. Can you talk about your plans for, you know, when you're looking to hold the graduation?
All right, so June twenty sixth is the official graduation date. I'm trying to keep as in close proximity to that date as humanly possible. So before June twenty ninth and no earlier than June twentieth, I do have to, I just can't pick a date randomly. It has to be subject to the availability and the agreement of the venue. If it is going to be a drive in type event, it would be better to be either in the early, in in the morning, I don't mean seven o'clock in the morning, I mean nine to ten o'clock, or in the evening when sun glare and heat is less of a mitigating factor, both in terms of the availability and visual capabilities of these screens, as well as, you know, lot availability and traffic. I don't know if we can pull it off on the twenty sixth itself, but I am trying to get as close to that date as humanly possible. Did you have another question, Ms. Hackett? I'm sorry, I
No, just I was wondering what your timeframe was because you had mentioned, I heard you say something about, you know, July and August being a factor in terms of maybe not being agreeable to everybody. So I wanted to get an idea of what was, you know, the timeframe you were looking at.
Mine, mine is to keep it as close, in close proximity to the actual graduation date itself without pushing it to the limit.
Okay.
John, there there is some confusion about drive in, what that, what you're, what you think it means.
The envisionment of it is to do it similar to a drive in movie theater where students would be in a car with their family pulling into prearranged spots arranged. So as they would normally be sitting on the floor, seated on the floor, they would be situated in front of a wall in or screened in area and view the commencement exercise from their car. The vendor also has an FM radio station so that the they don't have to just hear it from from a loudspeaker. They turn the car radio to a specific station and they would also hear the announcements and the proclamations being made by the speakers, as well as LED screens situated alongside the perimeter so that people have, number one, the grandstands view, as well as large LED screens where they would also be privy to the proceedings.
And the three things that you mentioned earlier, so you talked about the drive in, you talked about the parade, and you talked about the video. You weren't talking about those being options A, B, and C. You were kind of talking about doing all of them, correct?
That is correct. They all three will occur.
And John, just to veer off of graduation, people are still asking about prom.
Okay, so here we are. The the venue this year is the Carlton. As of right now, they're closed. And we have several different options that are being entertained. My understanding, having spoken to the vendor as well as the class advisors, that if we cancel because they are closed this month, we receive our deposit back and then have the luxury of planning a future date using that as as our monies. If we reschedule into July or August, number one, we don't know if they're open. Number two, if they are open, we don't know what the distancing rules will be. In other words, let's say they open in July, but the maximum capacity is a hundred, or they have to distribute the kids so far that they have to do indoor and outdoor and the kids aren't ever together, or they limit it so that it's only outside graduates and they're not allowed outside dates. In other words, the restrictions could be placed, could be such that, number one, it's in July and for the same reason as as commencement is less appealing, it might be less appealing to to some students. If that date comes about, we reserve that date. In other words, we postpone and it doesn't meet our satisfaction. If they're opened and we cancel, we lose our deposit. So we run the risk in postponing on losing a significant amount of money in the event we just postponed the date. So I know it's near and dear to the students' hearts. I'm I'm protective of their security as well as I am their money. I would just assume because the chances of them opening in on June twenty fifth is almost zero right now to cancel and then look for an alternative venue or an event where the money is still ours and we can control that.
Okay. John, just to go back to graduation for a second, will the students be able to get out of their cars, like if their names, is there going to be any opportunity for that? Because I know the community are going to ask about that.
Sure, and that's a great question. And we're based on the protocols and the distancing rules that we're being given. My ideal summary, and this again is subject to negotiations and based on the counsel that we're receiving, both from Nassau County, from Laura Kern's office, as well as the governor, would be to have a seating arrangement where there would be, we would bring three hundred chairs, for instance, and situate it so that the students are seated outside during the event. But again, safety and wellness of the kids is our first priority. I'm going to put on my running shoes in the event when we are sending the names out, that I will go from student to student rather than coming to us, both for expediency purposes as well as as proximity. We do have to be wary of time commitment and time constraints. Sitting, you know, the typical graduation ceremony lasts between eighty five to ninety eight minutes. That's the last five year average. And it's a large graduating class, sitting in a car for an hour and three quarters can be a bit of an experience. So we're trying to limit it so that we're number one focusing on the kids, number two, celebrating them and keeping it to about an hour.
So maybe the board should bring their running sneakers also and help you out with that.
But I, yeah, I, yeah. We, well, the logistics, once we have a site secured and I can actually go back to sleeping at night, working out the logistical parameters has been helpful. And the vendor that we've contracted so far and agreed with in principle has had significant experience. It's a thirty year firm. This is not a a fly by night. Working out the logistics and the parameters will not be done in a vacuum. And it's the dignity and the solemnity of the event. It's the celebratory nature. But I can't reiterate enough, it's the safety and wellness of our kids and our community that is driving this.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you so much for everything you're doing for the kids. We know, we know where your heart is at right now. We know how hard this has been. And we know how much you're trying to get this situated as quickly as possible, efficiently as possible. So thank you so much.
I appreciate that. And thank you, and I don't mean to be patronizing, but I know this has been difficult, especially if you, as a, as a parent who has a senior at home myself, to go home and seeing them like this, we're really, it's not just me, it's the whole staff in the community. They're really working to to make this happen. So and I thank, thank you guys for for being supportive.
Absolutely. We, our hearts go out to all of these kids, from fifth graders, eighth graders, twelfth graders. We've all been denied special experiences. I know everybody in this district is trying so hard to make up for the the lost time and the celebrations, but especially our seniors who we are going to watch move on now. We will not get an opportunity to onboard them into the middle school or the high school like we will some of the others. So we we get one last shot and we do want to make it special for them. I know you're putting a lot of pressure on on everybody, on yourself, and we really do appreciate it. So I'm sure we'll come up with the right solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy, feel free to jump out if you would like to enjoy the rest of your night. We will not hold you against, hold it against you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for joining.
You're welcome.
So we also are looking for an update on our district's summer programs, which we know had just had another executive order come from Governor Cuomo about what that might look like, Dr. Johnson.
Right. So thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over in a moment to Dr. Leahy, who's actually put tremendous amount of time in putting together a variety of different plans without having known where the governor was going to come with regard to what the summer programs might look like. I will say we were somewhat disappointed, but nevertheless, the reality of of the world in which we're living right now has somewhat truly dictated to us what's going to be available to us for the summer. We had, as you probably know, and many parents know in this community, we had put together an ACE program for the summer that we thought was terrific. But the governor recently came out with a, another governor's order that this allowed any contact or any onsite school program and essentially said that anything that we were going to provide to children during the summer had to be done remotely. So we've had to fall back on a variety of different Plan Bs. We are actually in the process right now of considering a number of different ways in which we can serve our children best. And I will tell you that certainly by next week at the board meeting, we will be able to finalize those plans, make them completely public. But we are right now in the process of putting together a variety of those different options that we would like to have available to our students. And I'd like Dr. Leahy to just kind of lay out some of them for us, or some of the, some of the thoughts that we have for that 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 we would like to have considered, knowing full well that we can't go into a tremendous amount of detail at this point since they have not been finalized. So, Dr. Leahy? Noreen? Uh-oh.
No, I just had to unmute.
Okay.
So thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Now, summer program, just to put this in perspective, when we start planning summer program, in a typical year, we start in late November, early December at the latest. So this program takes, you know, many months of planning, organizing, hiring staff, registering students, hyping up the program. And and all that was done, finished for an in person program, which as Dr. Johnson suggested, we were still hoping we would be able to do. So last week, the governor put the kibosh on the in person program, not to, I don't want to vilify him, I am obviously the reasons for doing that. But in any case, we cannot run an in person program. So we had to kind of think about how we, what parts of the fund, the enrichment and the remediation programs that we run every year, we'd be able to do in a different way. So the essential questions were, will we run it remote or live? Will we know it's going to be remote? The next essential question with was of the remote programs and the programs that we offer every year, which ones could be offered really realistically in a remote way? And then the third piece of it was, given the year that we've had, the loss of so many weeks of in person school instruction and this remote learning environment, do we need to put in another kind of enrichment program, some type of a summer enrichment program that focuses more on the academic skills that we might want to bolster? So that's pretty much where our planning went. At this point in time, it really looks like our pre K program at Culver will not be able to run remotely. And the many aspects of the summer ACE, which is the kind of the fun program that we run from nine to noon, Monday through Thursdays during five weeks of the summer, will not be run in its current state. The written we're looking at right now is a summer enrichment program for students in grades K to E. It'll have an opportunity for students to have some literacy skills, some numeracy skills, and then potentially a third piece of the remote program will be more of a, I guess, a fun or 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 enrichment in the true sense of the word will be offered as well. That program would not for the twenty days we typically do. We're looking at a shorter version of that closer to the start of the school year. So it would run maybe in early August to mid August or mid to late August so that we'd have a chance to give kids a little break from the end of the school year and then start again where they would get some essential skills reviewed before they start again their academic year. So that's the K to eight that we're looking at this point in time. The other, at the secondary level, there are remediation programs that are built in. We have a middle school remediation program that that are for students that fail courses in the middle school, and we have a high school remediation program for students that fail courses or the region's exams. So as you know, region exams has been canceled. So this, the courses this summer will be for students So this, the courses this summer will be for students who need to earn course credit because they failed the course. And those programs, both of those remediation programs will definitely run remotely. Though, we're looking at right now, running them very similarly as we run the in-person program. The same timeframe with some period, which is an hour and a half per course. So they could go up to two courses, 8:30 to 10:00 or 10:00 to 11:30. We assign a teacher and usually a power professional to those courses to teach the course. There would be some period of direct remote instruction during that period, and then some period of expected independent practice. So the hour and a half would be taken up every day per course. That's the planning as of right now. The other remediation program, the other program that we're looking at, although haven't made final decisions on, is potentially running some programs at the high school level that would address a, some type of an enrichment, a, a summer academic experience that would allow students that just finished a course to review the essential, passed the course, just finished it, allow them to review some of the essential skills they would need to say move on to the next level of instruction at the high school. So we're looking at finalizing what those courses would be as well. Again, a shortened version, not the 20 days. Maybe we're recommending about a 12-day program, Monday to Thursday, over three weeks, again in August, so it leads up to the school year. That's on the table right now. The other piece of summer planning is, I just described an embellished, in a sense, a summer program for the typical programs we run, that being pre-K, K to eight enrichment, and then the remediation programs. But there's also the other piece of it, which are the extended school year services we run for students with disabilities. And they are typically either related services, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, reading services, educational services that we offer every summer for some students that are recommended by the CSC. The second part are in the special class that we run for students in our special classes at Hewitt, our RISE program, and at Covert Core. So the little ones, we have state-approved special classes run every summer at Hewitt as well. And then the third special enrichment program of the students recommended that are entering sixth, seventh, or eighth grade. We call it the Bridge Program, and it was, it was been up, going for about three or four years. And there's small classes that address, again, literacy, numeracy, and then a fun enriching class that allows students to be, kind of get a preview of what's going to come in the first few weeks of the grade they're entering. So we do, we are recommending that we continue to run the Bridge Program. It may take a little different form, more like the academic enrichment program I described, the K to eight, that we want to offer to bolster academic skills. We definitely are going to run our special classes remotely at Hewitt. We have asked the state to expand that for another subcategory of students. I'll explain in just a moment. And of course, we will be offering all our related services remotely. We're going to be sending out some surveys for students that receive those services, students with disabilities who receive those services, to find out exactly what services the parents, you know, do want to accept or if they have other plans for the summer, given now that we will again be in a remote status. The last subcategory that students want to talk about are students that typically go to the Camp Anchor Program, which is a fantastic camp for students with disabilities in the town of Hempstead, runs down at the beach. Many, many of our students go to that program, Camp Anchor. Although they haven't made final decisions on whether, what they're going to run, they're not going to be business as usual running their program. So there is a possibility that some of those students will come back, back to us for some kind of programming. So that's the last piece we have to plan. So as you can see, there's a lot of moving parts. We hope to have them all finalized and put in place before the next board meeting, certainly. A lot of things happen simultaneously while we're making suggestions for programs. We're also putting a lot of feelers out to staff to see if Plan A is in place. Would you help us with Plan B? And of course, the staff is, they're wonderful selves, and many of them are coming forward to help us out.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a question that ended off on talking about Anchor. And we did have a parent write a question, Noreen, so I just wanted to. You know, the governor's order, I just want to confirm, covers outside and inside school grounds, correct? Because we had a question asking if the children that have the 12-month IEP could possibly gather even socially distant outside to be together face-to-face. And I don't believe that that's possible, but I think that question to be answered for the parent that had written into us.
At this, at this time, we don't have the authority to run an in-person, live summer program. The governor made it clear that school-sponsored summer programs had to be run remotely.
It doesn't look like that would change, really. Some of these things have changed as they've gone on, week by week, but this one seems to have been a blanket summer, small summer school camps, programs in school districts this year. That sounded to be a kind of final decision, didn't it?
It did sound that way. You know, I'm forever hopeful that miracles happen, but it's not likely that that will change this summer.
So one of the questions I had, you had talked about the K to eight enrichment program, but can we clarify what K means? Are you talking about K going into first at this point? Because you had mentioned that the pre-K program would probably be not able to run. Is there any consideration or what has the conversation been about? Our incoming kindergarteners and opportunities for them?
So the incoming kindergarteners, you know, many of them attend our pre-K program. We haven't really finalized or made any detailed plans about what we can offer. However, you know, we screen kindergarten, entering kindergarten students every year. That's required by law, and we get a real lot of information about the little ones as they're entering our program. So we're looking at ways to potentially get them screened prior to coming in in September. And along with that, give them some opportunities for exposure to their new schools, whether that through these, a video introduction to the principals and the staff, you know, video introduction to an orientation to the building. We are kind of talking about that right now with the principals. So we'll have a little bit more on that later. We have been trying to correspond with the parents of incoming kindergarten students in separate email distribution group to give them as many updates as we can.
I think that, yeah, I think that's important. I mean, that's, that's a group that has a hard time transitioning in as it is. And I know my, you know, children attended Covert camp, and it was such a great experience. And it's so sad that we couldn't offer it. But even those orientations and those screenings do make a big difference for the little ones getting, you know, familiarized with where they're going to attend in September. We lost that opportunity to do that this May, obviously. So anything we can offer those children to make that transition in smooth, I think we should consider.
Yeah, one, one thing we are considering, and I think it needs to be reiterated, we may be able to get our screening done this summer. So that, one of the things that Dr. Leahy has been looking at is the possibility, even though we don't run a program for these children entering kindergarten, we may in fact be able to invite the parents to bring their children in on a one-to-one basis. Well, and, and schedule them for an opportunity to be screened before they end up coming into kindergarten. So that's part of, that's part of the overall plan for the summer.
Okay.
Hasn't totally been fleshed out at this point, but we're close.
Okay. What are the questions from board members about summer programs? I know that we're not finalized yet, but just anything that's coming up from Noreen's presentation?
Not for me.
No. Thank you for your work, because I know you've been planning and really putting a lot of effort and thought into it, and weren't sure where it was going to go. So thank you for Plan A, B, C, and Z. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Noreen.
And then, Noreen, we've, we've already, you've enrolled about 400, 500 students already.
Yes, there's, there are almost 500 students registered for the in-person summer program. So obviously, much will change with that. So what we'll do is we will refund all of those monies to those individuals, and that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks. And then re-register students with the new and improved summer program when it's, when it's laid out.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know you've been working on this for a long time, and I know the governor's order kind of shut down some of your planning, but I know you've been working on it for a long time. So again, thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Dr. Johnson, an update on remote learning?
Yeah, I, I just want to talk again about the fact that it is an ever-evolving process. What we have right now is, is essentially the model that we're going to recruit with, which is, involves regular contact with our teachers on a face-to-face basis. But in addition to that, as you know, the model that they use on a regular basis, which EduCreations and CSO at the elementary, and to some extent at the high school level, regular meetings with their teachers as well. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. I think what I'd like to do is just let you know that we are most appreciative of the participation of our families and the parents in the, in the survey that we had sent out. We had about 1,200 people who are responding. It's come up a number of times in our discussions recently. We're in the process right now of collating and putting together all of the data. We will try to analyze it and have it available, at least maybe in part by, by the next opportunity we get together, but certainly by the 17th of June later on. It's been a learning experience for us. We really want to know what works and what doesn't, in the opinion of the families that we serve. We also got 300 and some odd responses from our teacher survey as well. So again, we'll have to juxtapose that body of information with that of the parents and take a look at, again, from the point of view of a learning experience on our part, what it is that we learn from the experience of both our instructional staff and those of the people that we serve, and try to come up with a better idea if in fact we are going to be involved in any kind of remote learning experience in the future. And I suspect that, that there is a very strong possibility on the basis of what it, I guess virtually everybody knows about what's been going on in New York State, that that certainly is a possibility come September or sometime during next year. So I'm very happy that the, that the families and our teachers made the decision to participate at the high rate that they did. It's going to really give us some terrific information. So my thanks to everybody who did participate. So that concludes my remarks at this time. I don't know if there's any questions that you may have about what we're doing.
I have a question just about the survey. At one point, I think somebody had mentioned also surveying students, and I was curious if that was still on the table?
Yeah, we're going to work with the principals on seeing if we can finalize a survey of students as well tomorrow. We, if we, if we can do that and put it together, we'd love to get it out to the kids and find out from them. Certainly not all the children in the school district. The youngest children in the school district will probably not be surveyed. But we believe from either the third or the fourth grade, and all probability be from the fourth grade on up, we should be able to get to them a survey and find out what their opinion is of what's been taking place. So we're working on that, and we have a meeting tomorrow with the principals, and we're hoping to get that finalized and out to the kids within, certainly by the early part of next week.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions? Remote learning? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
We have an item for discussion. So we talked a little bit earlier about our technology plans for next year. And I know we have our technology agreement with Bosse's as an item for discussion tonight. So want to just jump into that one too, please?
Yeah, well, as you know, we've divided it into two parts. Very often what we've done in the past is put a, a collection of purchases all together into a single package, send it off to Bosse's at the end of the year. This year, there's some degree of uncertainty about what the platform is that we are going to be utilizing next year at the high school level. There are a number of options that we are considering right now. The focus has been on Chromebooks and moving to a new platform, moving away from the iPads and over to Chromebooks. The questions that we have right now really have to do with the fact that we're not certain how many grades we should put into place at any given time. And that's something that we're hoping to have finalized within the next few days or certainly by next week. Then there's the other aspect of it, which is the, the collection of other purchases that need to be made that support the vast array of electronic equipment that we have within the school district. And I'm going to turn that over to Chris, if you wouldn't mind just spending a few moments talking about that. That's something that we would like to have moved forward tonight, approved by the Board of Education, so that we can then ship it off to Bosse's, get that equipment returned to us during this, and put in place before the opening of the school year. So Chris, if you had a few moments, please?
Of course. So we've essentially broken out to, to two aspects. The, this technology project where we pulled out Chromebooks, iPads, whatever devices that is that we are going to purchase. And tonight, we're going to look at just some specific things that we know that we need in the immediate future. We're looking at interactive whiteboards. These are the boards that are in each of the classrooms that the teachers utilize, a touchscreen, and we continue to use them in our classrooms and our libraries. Obviously, even if we are not back in school physically in September, we will be back physically in school at some point unless the governor and his group comes up with some other plans that they've talked about. And I don't think that's going to go that far. We will be back in a physical building, and so we're purchasing things for that physical building, such as these interactive monitors. The, we have laptop computers that we're purchasing, Apple iMacs. We have printers that we need to purchase as well, and workstations for replacement of iMacs in two of the computer labs that we have at the school, and desktop replacement computers for workstations for teachers as well. So all those costs are in the immediate future that we're looking to purchase in what we have been calling Project A as part of our overall budget, Bosse's project that is asking to be approved tonight.
Now, when we talk about computer labs, Chris, what we're talking about are labs that exist within the art wing of the, of the high school. There are two of them over there.
Yes.
They're an integral part of what we do within the art program. There's a lot of electronic work that's done by kids within the art, and that's the reason why we have relied exclusively on iMacs in the past. We bought them five years ago. They, it is time now for them to be taken out of cycle. They're off warranty, and it's time to move on to. So this is not new equipment. It is new, but it's a replacement for, for the iMacs that we currently have in both of those two labs, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Chris, are the whiteboards replacements also?
Yes.
You're not just, you're replacing damaged ones.
That's correct.
Yeah, everything that's in this, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris. Everything that's in Part A of the, of this purchase is in fact a replacement.
Just one thing that's not equipment-related, but we have the professional development cost in Part A of the Bosse's contract, Chris. But when we get Part B, we won't see that cost reproduced a second time. It was a one-time professional development cost. Can you just explain what that is and how it only occurs one time?
Sure. Well, I, I did get different information on that this afternoon about four o'clock that we never got to discuss, so I'm going to talk about that here. Each year when we do a project, yes, we, there are set aside funds for professional development through Bosse's, and we have set aside days in the contract so that we have a Bosse's professional developer. Her name is actually Laura Collin. She works through a program called Model Schools, and she's done a fantastic job over in the past, especially now, doing a boatload of our PD daily for our teachers during this crisis. So really has proven invaluable. So we front-loaded that into Part A. Today at four o'clock, we got a phone call, Mike Anderson called me, to say that we are breaking out our budget into a Part A and Part B. So to us, it's one project, Part A and Part B. But the way Bosse sees it, it is two projects. Part A is a project, and Part B is a project. And they would look to ask us to have model school days in that part of the budget as well. I spoke to, I called their superintendent, I called our superintendent, I called Bosse's superintendent, immediately spoke to him about our vision for this, that we had spoken, this was an express question by Mr. O'Shea and yourself last time, where we said this is not going to pop up again. So I'm working with Bob Dillon, who is the superintendent there at Bosse's, around this piece. There could be a minimum number of days we may have to put in there, 30 days, something like that. But I'm assured that those 30 days would be, could be sprinkled over the next five years. So those are days that we would pay for anyway, and so they would be banked. We wouldn't be charged any extra, it wouldn't be superfluous days. It wouldn't be days that we wouldn't use. Does that make sense?
It does. So we're supposed to have a final answer on that, Chris? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I'm going to, he's working. He's working on that. He said he's going to look into it tomorrow and we'll talk more.
So the development of the, that charge is over, was originally over everything, Parts N B. But now because we're splitting it off, they want more?
Because we're splitting it up into two projects, all their projects for technology, they require that we purchase model school day, professional development days. My argument is that it's one project split in two parts. They're seeing it as two projects. So we're going to have that discussion. Again, I immediately went to their superintendent about this discussion. If however, again, they do ask us to put in days, we would put in the minimum number of days and would not apply them all next year. So we have, you know, 200 days of PD when we don't even have 200 days of school. We would not do that. We can spread them out over the next five years. So we would be able to bank those days if need be.
Why not take 30 days of PD off of the Part A and put it on Part B?
We could do that. We would have to then take this project, this planned project, this Part A, off the agenda tonight, have it rewritten again, have it rewritten by Bosie's again, and then try to get it approved on June 3rd. It would back us up again. It's taken a month or two to get to this point. We've broken the project in two. Now we're going to go back again to the drawing board and I might get an answer that says we don't have to do that. But that is obviously the choice of the board if they want to do that.
I can't see if the, if the original contract, it counted those days for everything and now we, now they're going to make us add days. I would say that, you know, in my opinion, we need to go back and say, take the 30 days off and put them on the Part B.
I, I, we're meeting next week. And if you need to, I mean, we could probably meet earlier, but we're meeting next week. I would agree. Why, why, why pay for days now that we're not going to use? Right.
It's unfair also because we didn't have that impression. So we were ready to move on these items, but that's an extra cost that we really aren't looking to incur either. So I agree. I would rather us have information and know what we're approving and do it at once than incur an extra charge just because we broke it up into two pieces.
Right. We will at some point, obviously, use those days. There, it's not that, again, it would be monies wasted that we'd have so many days that we wouldn't use those days. We would use those days. But I understand what you're saying. Yes, it was very late to the table today. I did not get to discuss it with anyone other than Dr. Johnson just before the meeting started. So we could pull it out and ask them to start again. I don't know that we'd get the project back from Bosie's by June 3rd, but we'll ask them to do that.
Kelly, were you going to say, so you're unmuted for a second just before we?
I agree with John, Liz, and you. We have to make sure it's accurate, unfortunately.
Same. Sorry.
Yeah, we are sorry because we were hoping to be able to move on it. And, you know, this is, this is why we ask the questions that we ask. But it just seems silly, especially at this time of, you know, what's happening. You don't want to take any chances of even having to front-load days, even if we'll use them in the future. It seems a cost we can't really incur right now. I'd rather prove it when it's complete.
No, I agree. I mean, obviously, we use their days and we will. But, but I, if we don't have to pay for them right now, then we shouldn't.
All right, if we get back better information tomorrow that we don't have to do that, then maybe we don't have to go back again. We'll just put this one back up on the agenda on the third.
Right, hopefully that's the case.
And if we could even call a quick special meeting in the next couple of days, I think we would be willing to do that to get the contract approved because we've had the discussion. So if nothing changes from what we've seen and Part B will not incur professional development costs, I think the board members would agree to jump back on even a quick meeting in the next couple of days to get that done. But worst-case scenario, we do have another meeting, I believe, June 3rd, which is in a week. So if, hopefully, we can get it rectified even on their end and then have it approved within the week. Everybody agree?
Absolutely. Yeah. Don't go many places these days, so.
Yeah. We need to admit it. Okay, so we're gonna, we're going to pull that off then.
Otherwise, can I just ask a quick question about the professional development? It's not, it's, it's professional development for the entire district for everything, not just for the equipment that's listed here.
We use it in all seven buildings. We use it four to five days a week. We use it for 10 months a year. It is for everything that we do with technology and it is ongoing and it's outstanding.
Yeah, and it's not just necessarily, Liz, to get to your point, it's not connected to the hardware necessarily that you're looking at. We use it exclusively for teaching teachers how to use new platforms. So it's connected to all kinds of software purchases that we use with the hardware.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Were there other questions related to the contract itself from board members? No?
No.
Okay, so we'll pull that off from the final contracts for the night. Okay? Okay, anything else to Dr. Johnson on that or are we moving forward?
We're ready to move forward.
Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on May 6th and the special meeting on May 18?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports, a warrant for April 16th through the 30th and May 1st through the 15th?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to accept the receipt of financial report that's listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
One more question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to pull up the Bosie's contract.